Please join with me in prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and for the opportunities it has presented us. We pray your blessing upon us tonight. We ask your blessing upon this community and our residents, our merchants, all of those who call Conyers home. We pray that you would be with our decisions and keep us open to your, and make us mindful of your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Stamps, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome all of you here tonight, and as customary, anyone who would like to address the council anything, you're more welcome to come to the voting at this time. Mr. Schiff, you can be first.
I can be first?
You're good.
I'm good at being first. Tony's gonna leave. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilman. Appreciate the opportunity. Before we begin, I want to vent question a number that I have thrown out of the 2,000 empty units. If you look in the city of Conyers budget for 2012, 2013, which is 268 pages long, it has vacant housing units in the city of Conyers alone, 954, which is a 14.4% vacancy rate. That's the all figures in that city in Conyers alone. I'm here to address the amendments to the sign ordinance. This is the amendments. I've addressed several of the issues, particularly the lighted signs, the fact that you can't have a vehicle sign. I don't think y'all have quite thought out all the ramifications of that. Scott Foster's fire truck is a sign and would have to be removed. The helicopter in front of the VFW is a sign and would have to be removed, as well as the selective enforcement of a lot of these ordinances already. I've heard after businessperson after businessperson tell me their horror stories on code enforcement, making them change things that they've already spent all kinds of money on. We are in a very difficult economic crisis in this community. We have empty business after empty business, and those that are in business are just struggling by the skin of their teeth. And we need to have some leeway on being able to advertise our businesses. I believe that when it comes to non-conforming signs, there was a question that it does not say that they could extend the life, and it does in section seven. Section eight, five, 12, paragraph B, it says, "As long as the life of the non-conforming sign is not extended." It also questions whether it states about disrepair. In section eight, five, 17, it says in A, "All signs must be," it says, "what are neglected or dilapidated signs shall be manifested by the following: faded or flaking paint, rust, non-operative, partially non-operative illumination or mechanical devices, missing letters in signed copy, and damaged, dilapidated, or insecure signed structures." So it does state it in there. It doesn't matter what somebody says, it matters what's written in the ordinance. So a defective sign could certainly be anything, a sign could be considered anything. We not only need to look at these amendments, but we also need to look at the sign ordinance itself. We have a long sign ordinance, this is it, right here. Then we have the overlay districts. You have Cowan Hardware, which is right here on Green Street, less, about a mile away from Home Depot. Home Depot, if you go out there, they have sign after sign. They have little houses, they have fencing, they have all kinds of machinery out front with sign on each and every one of them for sale. I'm not saying we go after them, we don't, but we need to allow all businesses to be able to compete fairly. And I know my time is up, and I appreciate your patience. I ask for this to be looked at again, that it be put on hold, that a group of businesspeople, people that actually have a stake in these things, look at it, and we give some leeway so that we as a community can thrive. That's what we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else?
Mayor, could I correct a couple of things that were stated there before we go any further? Signs of non-conforming are not ordered to be removed. As long as they're maintained, they're allowed to stay there. So you referenced Scott Foster and the American Legion. As long as they're maintained, they are allowed to remain there. And that's what the amendment says, that they can be maintained as well, Dave.
As a vehicle, it has to be used in the day-to-day operation. Those are vehicles that have a sign on them. And if you read the ordinance, that's what, the amendments, that's what it says. And so we can sit there and say, yes, you know, I think we ought to leave them. Those are landmarks, those are beautiful, there's nothing wrong with them. Same way with the Dinky, it has a Conyers sign on it, but it's not used in day-to-day operations.
Okay. All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, Council, how are you tonight?
Good.
I came here to get my award. I came early, so I had to leave, so just easy. My name is Pat Cavanagh, and I'm the chairlet of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm representing the Chamber and the Board of Governors. I came here tonight to ask, you got something on the signage, and maybe this could be a solution. Recently, the county had a signage ordinance that caused quite a discussion in the community. The Chamber asked for a continuance or a tabling so that they could form a task force to work with staff of the county, and they worked together and they came up with something that was agreeable to most everybody. Tonight, I'm here to ask you on behalf of the Chamber that you may consider tabling this motion for 90 days. Allow the Chamber to form a task force to work with your staff, hand in hand, and come up with something, listen to everybody, come up with something that can be agreeable, that can be accepted by everybody, by you guys voting in the community. Is it going to be perfect? No, but I think it, you know, allow the Chamber to be able to talk to its business members even more. So that's why I'm here. I don't want to take much of your time, we'd appreciate your consideration on that, and I think that may solve some of the, I don't want to use the word hostility because it's really not, but concern on how that is. So that's what we're here for, I hope you guys would consider that. Thanks.
And I think that's doable.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay. Anyone else?
How are y'all doing?
Good. How you doing?
I'm Tony Scott, I own T&amp;B Motors on West Avenue. And the only thing that I can stress here is, I've been here since 1988. Been here a long time. I've made a good living for my family, but the last five years, my income has gone down every year. I need all the help that y'all can give me with my signs and things like that promoting my business. I know I'm a used car lot, and I know y'all like to run me off, but I've been here a long time, and I'm a part of the community. And I'd like y'all to consider good, fair signage, things like down payments on cars on the windshield and stuff like that. If I don't put those on the windshield of my cars, I'll have to close my business. It's just that simple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi.
Mayor, how you doing?
Good. How are you? My name is Derek Blue, I'm here on behalf of my mom over there, and her and my dad own a USA package store on West Avenue. And a lot of things have already been addressed. I just want to point out that I think there are some ambiguities in the proposed ordinance. There's some language saying that signs cannot be repaired to extend their life, whereas other provisions in the changes say that you can make certain repairs. So that's an issue that I would like to flag, that maybe we could clarify the language and kind of make sure people know what they can and cannot do. And as to the issue of eventually creating an unfair playing field, even if we are grandfathered in, that playing field will still be uneven for future business owners, and for instance, a competitor half mile down the street would be operating under different rules, and even if we are grandfathered in, I think that issue still exists. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sorry to be repetitive. Hey, guys, I'm Nadi Bella, I own Copy Central over on Parker Road, and we do signage. So I have a little bit at stake. I've been in this community seven years, in, well, I've been in the community 40 years, but I've been in a shop seven years, and I just feel like I'd be more than happy to sit down with a group of business owners and a group of y'all to try to come together with something that makes a little bit of sense. I was handed a sheet, I didn't read the sign ordinance that's being proposed, but it was my understanding that there's no flashing, blinking lights or electronic signs in or outside. And I happened to be standing in front of the welcome sign that's over the bank, right out my window over at the shop. And it, not only is it digital, not only does it flash, but it's full color and it blinks, and it really and truly makes me crazy at night because there it is doing it. And I kind of think that's what you're all after, but you know, that sign belongs to y'all, I do believe. And I do believe you make some money off of the advertising that goes on that sign, so it's just a comment from me. Thanks, and I know y'all.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Anyone else? Mr. Dean?
How you doing? I'm Danny Lockard. I'm going to echo a little bit of what everybody else has said to some extent. Most definitely, the verbiage, as we've already experienced this conversation here, is misleading. What we read into it and what the council reads into it, the mayor, whoever drew it up, it's a little bit misleading. I know there's some things probably going on in the county that you like to take care of business with, get rid of, but the way it's read, it's rough right now, it's too misleading and handicapped too many other businesses. So it needs to be re-looked at and revised so it makes sense to business owners, entrepreneurs, that type of thing. Small but big, electronic ink, I don't know if any of you looked at what that was since the last time we met. I don't think it means what most of you think it means, but it's in the ordinance that there is to be no electronic ink. I'm going to leave that one up for y'all to look at a little bit later. Definition of a sign is really large, you know, and after reviewing the sign ordinance in the city, you know, there's some question, it's hard to understand, it's also pretty hard to enforce. In some cases, as mentioned, within a half a mile, it changes. So how do you enforce, and how does a business owner even know from one area to the next what they can and can't do? They move in and they think everything is pretty much acceptable, but as I well know, on West Avenue is the second oldest commercial district in Rockdale County that's not commercial anymore, no dot topic, it's MXD, but it has a new sign ordinance. So what people see there now is not what's legal now. They just don't know that the sign ordinance has been changed. You know, in 30 years, it's been changed a lot, and it's contaminated. It needs to be revised, it needs to blend better with all three ordinances, it needs to be a little more business friendly. You know, I've talked to a lot of business owners in some recent, some past, they moved here with the vision of building their business, and they spend their last monies to move into a place, they secure a lease, they buy their product, they get all their inventory. The next thing, which was, should have been the first thing they thought about, is the marketing. Marketing is the livelihood of every business. So they go to get the permit. Oh, boy, they got, they got another, they got something else coming because it's very complicated. And they find out what they see is not what they can have, and therefore they're not, they don't have the ability to market their business like they thought they should. Now, I'm not going to say it's the city's fault that they didn't go do their research. Somewhere in the near future, it'd be nice, just as I mentioned earlier, covenants, last time we met. They need something in their hand that they can follow as guidelines, so they know what the rules are, and they could probably play by them after that. But if they had those rules ahead of time right now, I feel quite confident, a lot of them would be going down the road where they could have the signage they need to promote their business. I know that, you know, planting a zone it catches a lot of grief. I hear, I hear it all the time. Maybe they don't document their stories, but I hear them, and I know what's happening. So I encourage you to do a little more digging, find out what business owners need here in this community, where the fair balance is. Give us the opportunity to market our business, or just an entrepreneur to market their business, to where we're not breaking laws, we're setting ourselves apart, we're distinguishing ourselves a little bit differently from everybody else, because why? We want to draw attention to ourselves. Sign ordinance says, anything that draws attention to a building, a structure, a rock, anything that draws attention is a sign. Atlanta Braves doing real good, aren't they? They, they, the Atlanta Braves, somebody took it upon themselves to cut an A, an A, an A for Atlanta Braves and their grass. This sounds trivial, but I'm serious, the way the sign reads right now, that A in that grass is illegal in this city. It's a sign. It's a letter, it's a sign. So anyway, with that said, you know, hey, I've been here since 1979, I plan on being here a lot longer. I encourage somehow or another that we have the conversation to put something together that's right. And I think we've all mentioned that before, what's right. Let's sit down and figure this out, and do business and make this a county and a city that everybody can thrive with it.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you, all of you. Okay. Any individuals come?
No, sir.
All right. Karen, I need to do these individuals, can I do them all at once?
Can you do them individually, sir, please?
All right, okay. Minutes is 15, I need a motion, second.
Subway.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. I need to do 15 twice, I can, all right, got 15, all right, got 15, six o'clock, a motion, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
17.
Subway.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
22nd.
Subway.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
22nd to 12.5, subway, second.
Second.
Aye. Thank you. We had five public hearings, y'all are just trying to whip through them, finish 25 minutes. Okay, Tony, here's the service.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Owens, come forth with more than plenty. Steve has 10 years of service, yes, Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'd like to bring to your attention and congratulate Steve Owens on his 10 years of service. He's obviously been with the planning and special service department for 10 years. Steve is the chief building inspector, he's also the oversee all the new construction as well, all the renovations of buildings within the city, of course, he's the bad guy that does all the court enforcement and oversees.
Steve, you're marking your shirt, too.
Really, really put you up on the spot here tonight, okay. But also, Steve is a very valuable member of the planning and special service department. Also, I'd like to recognize that Steve has just served his first year as president of the International Association of the African Specials of the Georgia Chalk, so I'd like to congratulate and publicly recognize him for that, but I'd like to recognize and congratulate Steve on his 10 years of service.
Right. Congratulations. He does get beat up on a little bit, Mayor. Guesses for how he's a pretty big boy, though. Mayor, also, Thomas Skipper, good to be here with us tonight. Thomas has done 15 years with us at the Georgia International Horse Park, and just wanted to make that an acknowledgement. All right, at this time, if, David Spann?
Another marked individual.
Mayor, as you can see, David is being awarded his 25 years of service with the city tonight. Just a few small tales. I'm trying. You know, as you marked, 25 years, 1988, David had other service with the city prior to that. You may remember, he was a young man that had a successful business in the community. David had begun a law enforcement career in actually North Carolina, many years before that.
We see, we see the picture.
And he came down here and he came to the police department and talked to Roland Vaughn, the chief then, about doing some volunteer service. And David did a lot of volunteerism for the city beginning in 1985, 84, working many hours with the reserve unit, and then actually working in many other years there, he actually was doing some part-time service for us at that moment in time, and making a meager, I want to say, was it six buck an hour?
Six, six eighty an hour.
Six eighty an hour as a part-time police officer, and sometimes doing 40 and 50 hours a week at this level. And then, for whatever foolish reason, he decided to sell his successful company at the time and come to work full-time, and he did, and began work with us as a peace officer. And as you very well know, rising through the ranks, he's done a variety of things. Of course, then we have the Olympics coming to town and that sort of thing. And David was the field commander during the Olympic Games, and ran that at that particular time, which was very stressful for all of us during those years and times. And then after that, he was tasked by the then-city manager, Rebecca, to go out to the horse park, and he was the director of the horse park for a period of time also. I forgot how many years that was. And then we dragged him back to the city, dragged him back to the PD, he ran the investigative division of the police department for a number of years. And then I tapped him to bring him to City Hall when I made that move, and you all got me to go up there from the police chief's job. So David has a variety of experience, the 25 years is not reflective of all the time that he has put in with the city. He has survived it all of these years, and maybe with a little bit of luck, he may survive a couple more. It's your little 25-year paper. I believe the mayor might have something. David, come around here, we want to present to something. I know everybody wants to shake their hand. Congratulations. Come around, come around here, you stand up here, whenever I say that.
25 years. So this is what, from Bull, what you owe me, is it really a period?
Yeah, this is a 25-year gift.
All right. That looks like my watch. Oh, this is it. This is it.
He looked at it and said, 25 years. Congratulations. We weren't going to put it in here at all. Anyway, congratulations, David. David, this out of the way, nothing to do with it.
I know that. I wouldn't have expected that.
I've never known you being lost to words, so you feel free.
I thank you all very much for allowing me to serve you this long. I mean, it's been an absolute privilege for me. I can't say every bit of my time here has been, you know, extremely enjoyable, but I can tell you that I am a living example of being afforded every opportunity to advance and go to college and go to every possible program. You all paid for two of my three college degrees. You sent me to every class there was for me to go to. You've afforded me the opportunity to work in numerous departments in the city. I've had a chance to do things that I never thought I would be capable of doing in my life, because you all trusted me and valued that I could do the job. Hopefully, I've done a good job. I can't be any happier than in the job I'm in right now. I still get fully sunned, but I'm doing something that I really, really enjoy, and I think this is a wonderful community, a wonderful city to work for, and more people should be proud to serve as long as I have. So thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
Right. Thank you, guys. Anyone else? Tony? No. All right. Old business, John, speaking of sign ordinances.
All right. In case anyone doesn't know, in order to take any action on this, even if it's only to table it again, we have to vote to take it from the table because that's its current status. So Mayor, at this point, I would move to take ordinance 938 from the table for the purposes of discussion.
Okay. We have a motion to take it off the table. A second. Coach, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, it is officially off the table.
Okay. Regarding ordinance number 938, Mayor, I would move that we again table this ordinance 938. My only question would be to what time, let me make for the sake of this, three months was mentioned, that would, our first meeting in November would be on November the 6th.
Do we need three months?
Do we need three months? You know, I think whatever works, as far as the Chamber's concerned, you know, putting a task force together and working with your staff, whatever you think is the proper.
I think you got to put a time limit.
If we put 60 days, we can always, 16, we can come back. To get it done before that.
All right.
60 days.
You're standing and I'm not.
If I might, the 18th of September, I'm positive we will have a meeting on that date. That's about six weeks from now. That should be sufficient time, I would think.
All right. If I might, then let me move that we table any action on ordinance 938 until the stated meeting on the 18th of September, 2013.
Mayor, point of order, if you go ahead and catch your second and choose to vote, then there'll be no further discussion on the matter tonight by council.
Right. We're going to remand this back to committee, and Pat, and I think I talked to Fred, Fred's over there, and David will put a committee together and hope it work through this thing and get everything sorted out, okay? All right. All right, so we got a motion table to 18.
I'll just quick, what kind of input did you have at your committee meeting? Was it similar kind of input we had tonight, so you'd have a better idea of what their concerns were? Actually, the committee meeting, there was, no one from the public was there. I'm pretty sure it was advertised because the Rockdale News was present, but there was no other community input there.
Okay.
And the things that were discussed were basically, all of those amendments are, most of those are there because someone from the community has complained about those items and wished we had something in place to address them. So it needs to be, it needs to be discussed from both sides of that issue.
All right. Why don't we, maybe David, y'all, is there some way we can get emails from y'all so they can shoot this out, so when they get the date, that way all of y'all can be there? Or some way we can communicate to y'all, that way when this date, this meeting is set, or meeting set, we can make sure we got everyone there. That's, okay? So, yeah, Pat?
Mayor, we'll point somebody to chair that from the Chamber, and we'll not contact, we'll contact the staff and set those arrangements and go and proceed immediately on that, okay?
That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Got a motion, got a second on the table?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay. New business.
Brad?
All right. If I might, then let me move that we table any action on ordinance nine-three-eight until the stated meeting on the eighteenth of September, twenty thirteen.
Mayor, point of order, if you go ahead and catch your second and choose to vote, then there'll be no further discussion on the matter tonight by council.
Right. Well, just we're going to remand this back to committee and Pat and I think I talked to Fred, Fred's over there. And David, we'll put a committee together and hope it work through this thing and get everything sorted out, okay? All right. All right, so we got a motion table to eighteen.
I'll just quick, what kind of input did you have at your committee meeting? Was it similar kind of input we had tonight, so you'd have a better idea of what their concern were?
Actually, the committee meeting, there was, no one from the public was there. I'm pretty sure it was advertised because the Rockdale News was present, but there was no other community input there.
Okay.
And the things that were discussed were basically all of those amendments or most of those are there because someone from the community has complained about those items and wished we had something in place to address them. So it needs to be discussed from both sides of that issue.
All right. Why don't we, maybe David, y'all, is there some way we can get emails from y'all so they can shoot this out, so when they get the date, that way all of y'all can be there? Or some way we can communicate to y'all, that way when this date, this meeting is set or meeting set, we can make sure we got everyone there? That's, okay? So, yeah, Pat?
Mayor, we'll point somebody to chair that from the chamber and we'll not contact, we'll contact the staff and...
That'd be great.
Set those arrangements and go and proceed immediately on that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, got a motion, got a second on the table?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Okay. New business.
Brad?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to approve a contract agreement between the City of Conyers and Brunel Ammons Engineering for, they do the reports for Millar Bottom Road, Landville, whenever we do our semi-annual testing out there. It's a two-time event each year. Each event is twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's a total of five thousand per year for that. Also, in here, we have a fee of fifty thousand dollars set for this next year so that if we get into action correction majors for the Millar Bottom Road, Landville, we have that in there, so it's already covered and approved.
Okay. All right.
And I ask for your approval.
All right. See, a motion. Council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Conyers and Brunel Ammons Engineering for Environmental Services for twenty thirteen, fourteen year at Millar Bottom Road, Landville.
Okay. Have a motion, we have a second.
David.
Any discussion? I'd like to see an end on the table, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. Here?
Mayor, this is a request for the council to approve a contract between the City of Conyers and the Mooreland Alta Deli Associates for Engineering Services for intersection improvements at Scott, Green, Pine Log and Main Streets. Engineering Services approved for Phase A, which would include a concept design for signalized intersection and a roundabout for a cost of about twenty-two thousand nine-hundred fifty-seven dollars. Phase B would be for design of a selected concept design to do full engineering and design. And then if a signalize is chosen, the cost would be about ninety-nine thousand dollars. If the roundabout is chosen, the cost would be eighty-five thousand nine-hundred twenty-four dollars for engineering. And I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second.
David.
Any discussion?
I have a few things. A couple things. I noticed that once they do this initial work, then there's a whole year before a decision has to be made. At least you've got a year before a decision has to be made. I mean, it didn't take twelve months to figure out which direction to go in, does it?
No, it will happen pretty quick. What they'll do is they'll come out and we'll do all the right-of-way work and get some documents from CSX Railroad. And we will do a concept design that will show where the right-of-way is and it will show what right-of-way would be needed if we do a signalization on both sides of the tracks or if we've done a roundabout. And in that way, the Mayor and Council can make a good decision on which way they want to go or if they decide not to do this project at all because we're going to involve too much right-of-way costs.
Yeah, I was thinking about the right-of-way and the roundabout.
The second part is, I think I know the answer, but are we doing everything we can to be sure CSX doesn't just slow this thing down forever as they're trying to do?
We always do that, and actually, the railroad street project has moved along pretty quickly with the exception of the utilities.
Do they have good CSX, right?
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Here?
Mayor, this is a request for the council to grant a right-of-way easement to Snapping Shoals DMC to run new power lines at the back of the northwest corner. Sure, can you run guard force property, this property that's not used for due to its proximity to the Transco gas line? So I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right. A motion, we have a second. Any discussion? See an end on the table, say aye.
Aye.
John, you got the last two?
I'll have to refuse myself from the fifth one, number eight, actually. Number four is the reappointment of Stephen Holmes to the Historic Reservation Commission for a three-year term from September first, twenty thirteen until September first, twenty sixteen, and I would so move.
All right. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ben, she take five points.
The reappointment for the Historic Preservation for Ms. Carol Fountain for another three-year term.
All right, that's formal motion. That's a form of motion.
You put me on the spot.
You've got to be ready. We got a second. Any discussion? Here and then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Committee reports. Eric?
Just one quick thing, railroad street, still waiting on for a minute.
I think you died to have to need help. Chris?
Horse Park, wrapping up a rodeo last weekend, had a very good attendance, was there tonight. We've got a Rugged Maniac Race coming up, which is an obstacle run on the seventeenth. And then the last weekend, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, is our Wildlife Festival.
Good.
And also at Horse Park, bookings were real well last month. We had one, two, three, four, five, six new events, three renewals, roughly about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of revenues been booked last month.
Great, guys.
Good job out there at Horse Park.
Good. I've been hearing advertised the Bull Run. Yeah, you want to tell us a little bit about that, David?
Well, I don't...
Putting you on the spot, too.
I don't know a lot of the specifics about the event, but it's getting a ton of publicity right now. In fact, we were talking to a promoter today, who is a same promoter for the Rugged Maniac that's coming up in just a couple of weeks, and he was in New York City filming a segment for the Today Show that's supposed to air tomorrow about it. And my father, who lives in Florida, called me this weekend, he said, "So I understand you're having a Bull Run." And I said, "How did you know?" And it was in the paper in Jacksonville. They're getting a lot of press, but they're, basically, they release like six bulls at a time, and they've got a track, more or less, that's going to be in the Grand Prix Stadium, and there's places that people can duck out and try to avoid getting run over. And then the bulls chase them, basically. They're not the mean, they're not the bulls that are bred to be mean like the ones in Spain, but...
A bull's a bull.
But it's exciting. We're very excited about it.
Yeah, I thought they said they had two thousand to sign this for, signed it so far.
So far.
Yeah. That's a lot of things. Thank you.
And afterwards, they're having a tomato throwing event.
Really?
Yeah, because apparently that's similar to what's done in Spain also. They have music, you know, it's going to be a festival atmosphere.
You can wait until you go outside before you get out there.
Yeah, the promoter is actually an attorney.
Yeah, they've done this once before, I'm sure.
I think there's a dry cleaner who wants to put a sign up out there.
Did you hear that, David? He wasn't paying attention.
He wasn't paying attention just as well.
David, did you hear that?
No.
Repeat yourself, John.
There might be a dry cleaner who wanted to put a sign up at the Horse Park, but tomato throwing event. And if they bring carpets, sandies...
Is there a lot of stuff to wash out?
Coach?
I was saying about the bull, my committee doesn't have the name, but the thing about the bull, you know, the good Lord gave me these gems to live, and I'm not going to screw them up out there like some... I'll be in the stands watching these young people who have years to live. I got two weeks to go. They got years to live, they're going to take a chance, you know, so I just watch them from the stands. I laugh, and I laugh at them, and as he said, "A bull is a bull is a bull, he doesn't know that he's not mean." So I'll be in the stands watching. Guys like Ben, who like to take chances, don't lie. I run those bulls with his little short leg, I wish he'd...
I just had to be faster than the guy next to me. I got a couple of things with that kind of development. The Joseph Rock, which did close in the back part of the bumper building, that's been in the works for since the start of the year. We thought that Matt Rowbuck was going to be putting a gem in part of it, but it looks like they're going to need all the space for the salon, so we're trying to find Matt a home at Old Town, so that's, but that has closed in there. I guess they've already started some of the renovation. Filming is going on in Old Town, if you haven't noticed.
How's that going?
Basically, who you ask, I believe, is Cash back, is that you, Cash? Yeah, Cash asked that same question last night at the D-Day meeting, and I'm afraid I told him that I could be real specific, and the answer is, it depends.
Depends.
It depends on who you ask, how it's going. So today, I did not get a very good comment about it, but some days are better than others. But it's going on and we're moving down the road to try to do as much damage control as we can. But also, I guess the main thing though is that we are working on a policy for future filming that may become an ordinance at one point in time. And Jennifer and David and Guy Sanders on that committee, we've got kind of a meaty first draft, it looks really good. They've thought of a lot of things that we put in it to give us some, not control, but you know, let them know what our rules, our businesses have to be able to operate. So that's in the works and we are hoping to bring that to fruition as soon as we're pretty...
Soon.
Soon. So that's going on. And the, I guess the last thing, August tenth, this Saturday, would be our second movie on the grass, this is news in Old Town, The Great and Powerful Oz. The first one, as you know, went really well for the very first one, we hoped it had an even better turnout. And the next one, and the third movie, which has not been named yet as of right now, Jennifer, is that right?
Right.
We're still waiting. That was moved from September seventh because that's the South Carolina game, and you said there's no way we're going to have it on that.
Naturally, they couldn't do it, they couldn't do it then, that's right.
But this will be moved for the twenty-first, so that's, we hope that will go well. Other communities do them and they bear well received and just adds to the sense of community and spirit for the community, so we hope it goes well.
Great. Thank you. John?
Well, from community development, I was going to ask, couldn't I trade my committee for another one, but after hearing about a maniac race and a bull run, I'd just as well offer it out, so.
Nothing from this committee.
Nothing from this committee, that's all. I think we got a marriage coming Saturday, don't we? You want to elaborate a little bit on that, Vince?
Well, you got one after...
I got one after that.
After mine, but you got one. And you know, the four words that I've heard over and over and over from my wife is, "I need a check." "I need a check." It just keeps coming, so, but I think all the checks are read and at least the money's gone, but it's...
The money's gone.
There's no more checks before, but now it's going west, it's going well, it's going to be exciting for my husband.
It's this baby girl getting married.
Thirty-three-year-old baby girl getting married, so we'll see how it goes.
I'm looking forward to it.
I'm sure I'll be fine, it'll just be another day in the life, so.
Another day in paradise.
Yeah.
John, you got one, too?
There's a few weeks.
Few weeks. Good. All right. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. I might, I might, to defer just a few minutes. Jennifer Bexley, can you come forward? They have a presentation and a short presentation about the horse park.
Well, good evening, y'all. I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and give you a preview of the upcoming Wildlife Festival. Jennifer's about to get going. The festival this year is going to be August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, it's just a few weeks away. If everybody could keep their fingers crossed for good weather, we desperately need that. The theme this year is fur, feather, and print. And while we have a group of people that work on the festival, Jill Goodson, who's here with me tonight, is the one that's officially in charge. Y'all may all know that Jill loves leopard print, and she was actually able to incorporate leopard print into our theme. So we'll go on to the next one, Jennifer. Oops. Okay. Yeah, it'll be easier to talk about the music, I guess. We have some of the same activities we've had in the past, you know, our biggest fan for the festival is Carrie here, and she was asking me about it today, in fact, but we have some of the same activities plus a few new ones. The Jason Clark is coming back with his reptiles, and y'all may see Jason Clark on TV from time to time, because when people find snakes and stuff in their house or wherever they're, he's often on TV catching that snake. And the next one, we've got Wildlife Wonders, and they're coming back, they're always very popular. And the next one is The Living Histories coming back, which is always a popular one as well. Then we've got shopping, lots of things you can look at to shop, many of them are wildlife-related, some pictures, paintings of wildlife. The famous Rufus the camel is returning this year, and you can ride Rufus if you would like to do that. Rufus was very excited when he got to the horse park last year, and a picture of him there, it had his head sticking out of the trailer because he was so excited when he got there.
He could do a hunting?
Yeah. Then the next one, Jennifer?
Some of the new things that we've got, you can't, there is a shooting range, an airsoft shooting range, where you can actually shoot at a wildlife, a wildlife animal thing. And Rufus is going to have some friends with him, he's got a zebra and a lemur coming with them. Local entertainment groups are going to be on our stages as always, and then we've got a scavenger hunt, which is always a lot of fun for the kids to go and find little things that are hidden in different vendor booths. We also are going to be doing an art activity with kids where they can create their own feathered hand, and that should be a lot of fun. The Beach Zone is coming back, which is sponsored by Zaxby's, and so Little Zach is going to be at the Beach Zone. And we're very excited because ninety-four-nine The Bull is a big sponsor for us this year, and they're going to have tailgating for tickets to the Miranda Lambert concert in Dirks Bentley, so that should be exciting. And then if you can like us on Facebook, then you are entered in a chance to win some fun bucks that you could spend at any of the vendor booths. So we hope that you'll come out and join us for the festival. Jill has got some T-shirts to get everybody in the mood for the festival, and we're just real excited about it and hoping you come see us then.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Is that a leopard's watch?
Hymn?
Is that a leopard's?
Zebra.
Zebra. Hey, I have my glasses, Coach. He's a little fuzzy.
Thank you, guys. All right. Tony, just a couple things. Mayor, I noticed a couple eyebrows in when I just, and this is not discussing elements of the sign ordinance, but I didn't want to qualify, especially with the news here as well. Should our landmark sign that we have, the city sign, adjacent to I-20, we do not charge for any of that messaging that is on there, it is for our messaging and then governmental messaging. For example, we had some messages from the local school system that was there, but we can't sell, don't sell advertising on that sign, and that's actually a, a rank with Georgia DOT, by the way. Also, I feel intent on embarrassing David Spann just a little bit more, and maybe he knew it because he apparently fled out the door.
No, that's true.
He made it back.
Yeah.
Dee, you going to make some comments, Dee? You know, you kind of went to, and now's your opportunity.
You already said them, because I was going to say that David claims he's worked here a lot longer, and he has, and those hours that he worked were not always forty hours every week, so we've all paid.
Dee, I'm reading into this as human resource, but we're saying he did work that many hours. Okay.
Well, where was he?
So is it really twenty-one years?
No, the twenty-five, the twenty-five is solid, he's saying twenty-eight.
He keeps playing, he's worked here all these years, so he and I have been going back and forth over this for quite a time. I had to even cut the W-2s out and everything to show them.
I think they're both going to have to spank the son regardless, but this has been an ongoing challenge, and I figured it out just after this presentation. When we do this Bull Run thing, I think we can use that as a form of discipline, you see? And we'll assign people like David and Dee's going to have to be the first out to run for the Bull Run. I think it is commendable, though, and it's great to always mention that we've had employees that have been here this many years, Mayor, and congratulations to David Spann. Hopefully, he can make a few more because he is still a peace officer, and he will become qualified for some level of retirement real soon if he can make it that long. Other than that, I have no further, Mayor. We do not have, I do not have reasonable executive session.
Thank you, John. Final comments. Final comments, John, you're in.
Thanks and congratulations to our staff who are celebrating handovers.
Vincent?
Well, you know, Mayor, it was rough about the bull run coming up and I thought, you know, you need to lead by example and so I took the liberty to create a T-shirt that has a symbol of you as the mayor on the back and some very, you know, bulls actually, they can't read, but they can sense things. So I thought some nice, you know, verbiage on the front that would be soothing, you know, and have a calming effect on the bulls. So I got you a shirt, I want you to read and I want you to hold it up so if I can see what it says. So this is for you to wear during the first one of the bull. It says, bulls should wear skirts. And that goes, that goes back to the days when the Pittsburgh Steelers were king in football and they were making these new rules about quarterbacks and Mean Joe Green said that, you know, want to protect quarterbacks, Mean Joe Green said quarterbacks should wear skirts. So that's, that's where that idea came from. But you're, you're our leader, you're our mayor and.
I appreciate that, but you're the mayor pro town. I think we can take a vote, we'll just give it out.
I'm playing second fiddle today.
Coach?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the public for coming in, you know, watching the concern about some of the things that we do here. And we do hear you and hopefully we'll hear you more in the future. It's a two-way street. Remember that every time you make one person happy, you're making somebody else mad. And so on this, on this committee that we're giving up, please have a lot of input from a lot of people so that when we finally do something to decide on it, that we'll all be on one accord and let's continue to do it that way, you know. When we had the committee meeting the other day and nobody showed, you know, that's really, I'm not trying to dredge up anything, but that doesn't show a good face. We need to show a good face from both sides, that, you know, we're going to work on this thing and we're going to get it done. And we want to get it done with public input so that we can satisfy as many people as we possibly can. I hope you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Chris?
Get off the coach's comments and David, congratulations on 25, I'm sure, wonderful years.
I bet Dee's right.
I put my money in there.
Yeah, I would too.
Jared?
I do want to congratulate David also and I wish I had been able to find it. I have a picture of my now 32-year-old daughter when she was in fifth grade being awarded the Dare Bear. I think then sergeant span. It's cool.
Alright, congratulations, David, congratulations to everyone. Stand adjourned.